That's intimidating. You want me to close it? Two-minute warning. What?
For money or state?
Either. Okay, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. The three-minute rule for public comment is in effect. We have two board members missing. Glenn is on a road trip out into New England. He had scheduled it previously, the week before the board meeting. That trip got canceled and they moved him to this week. It's a 50-year anniversary road trip plus two years because of COVID. So he decided he better go ahead and do it. Jenny came home from work today, sick. So it doesn't look like she's going to be here. She wasn't sure. So we'll start with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Have my fellow board members had a chance to read the minutes from the August 12 council meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, made by Russell. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dolores, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like we have one funeral deed. And the payroll documents, has everybody had a chance to look at those? I will entertain a motion to approve those as presented. Make a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Take a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the Baptist seats in the back are taken.
No.
Started. Funeral deed. Okay, Matt, you want to come up?
Sure.
For a Commonwealth update?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, council. Wanted to provide you guys with our update on our wastewater and our water projects and some information. I believe, I hope you have in your packets. The latest memo, pretty detailed, thorough. I don't want to read this to you unless you would like me to, but I wanted to highlight a few things. And certainly, if you have questions, please ask. So, one of the big things, we're in the process right now of reviewing what are called shop drawings from the contractor. And we anticipate, as you can see on here, giving a formal notice to proceed around November 13 to start construction on the wastewater project. So if we can do it a little sooner, we will. But he does have that timeline. And then also in your report, I wanted to point out, we've got a spreadsheet here, a table of what we would like to propose monthly progress meetings throughout the life of the project. But we like to have those usually after the board meets. So as you can see, we would do those concurrently with your board schedule. So that way, we can get everything approved, looked over, and then make a recommendation for payment, for approval from you guys. So if you're okay with this schedule, I'm going to let our folks know that we can use this, go back and...
Damon, this is what we agreed to in the pre-construction meeting, wasn't it?
Have you seen... Damon, you need a copy? Have you seen it?
I have seen it.
Okay. I'll leave you mine. I can leave you mine if you need... But it does mirror the pre-con meeting. So, okay. Those were the big highlights in terms of the construction schedule. And the good news finally is November, we should issue a formal notice to the contractor to get going. So it's been a long time coming. Waterside, I'm not sure if everyone's heard a lot about the work. The initials called PFOS. It's called a forever chemical. It is in a lot of materials that we all handle every day in some form or fashion. It is a byproduct of, to make a long story short, of Teflon. And the state of Indiana, through the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, are now requiring communities to test for PFOS. Westport was one of the first ones that was proactive to go after some grant funding to help test for it. And that grant application was submitted last week. And we feel like the funding will be accepted by the state. So Westport can have, at no cost to the town, sampling done and further identification to find out what, if any, of that chemical is here. So every community in the state, at some point in the near future, is going to have to be dealing with this. And it is a federal mandate passed down to the state, passed down to the locals. So not always popular, but it is something that IDEM feels strongly enough that they need to start looking at the water systems around the state of big, small. You know, from Indianapolis to Greensburg to Westport and everything in between. So they are taking it pretty seriously. The good news, there are some grant dollars out there to help sample and do this. And Westport applied for it, and we feel like they got a really good chance of getting it. So from that standpoint, I want to give you guys an update. We worked with Gloria to get that submitted last week. Brian signed off on it last week. So I don't know if you want to say anything on that or not. Brian, Gloria?
Looks like the project runs through July of 2025. Is that, am I reading the schedule right on the last page?
For PFOS or sewer? Yeah, you're right on the sewer, yes. On the sewer. Yes.
Okay. All right.
So, and on the water, we continue to work with Jay on the Cougar Road, working with Greensburg and County Water, County Rural Water. Our regulatory specialist continues to work on that and get that situation ironed out as well. So Brian and Damon, I think both have been a little bit involved in that. If you guys want to comment or... Brady, Brady Drier and our environmental compliance specialist is...
Yeah, I think we're looking good. The latest numbers show that we're in compliance.
Yeah, I think you are. So...
We know it'll be okay.
So that's, that's better. So, okay. And we are, Rachel went ahead and did that cursory review for Jay on some of those chemicals. So that's done.
All right. Any questions for Matt, Russell, Dolores?
Thank you. All right. Good. Damon, you good?
Next on the agenda is, was bid openings for the property at 209 East Mulberry. That's this tract of land next to the current police department, the old fire department. And there were no bids. The, apparently the appraised value of $22,000, that kind of acted as a reserve, was too high. And we'll have to decide where we're going to go from here, whether we're going to keep it, whether we're going to put it in the hands of a Realtor, do another month or another round of bidding. I don't have strong feelings about any particular direction. But we've got a data point now. We've learned something, so, okay.
Somebody generous. I mean, I know it's out there now.
Yeah. Okay. The 2025 budget public hearing. We're required by state law to have a hearing on the 2025 budget proposal. So I will state that the public comment or comments on the 2025 budget is now open. My time I've got is 6:41. So are there any comments? Did you have, you had copies of the budget?
Yes. There's copies on the chair by the front. They grabbed a copy.
Can you give us the Cliff Notes version of what's different from last year?
The biggest difference is that we are not doing a community crossing project next year. So that cut our budget by almost $300,000. Last year, our budget was over $1 million. This year, it's only $743,000. So I did make some cuts. There's a lot of areas where we just don't have plans for things next year. For example, we don't really have any plans in economic development, so I cut that budget. It was $65,000 last year. I cut it down to $30,000. And we were, we were looking at spending a lot of money this year in litigation. And there's not as much plans for that next year. So I cut our litigation costs in half. That's under the professional services on the Casino Riverboat on the first page, and then under professional services in the general. I went through and just worked really hard at crunching numbers and getting it as accurate and as close to our spending as possible, which did result in some decreases. But nothing really unusual or different. Like some years, we planned for buying a vehicle and things like that. There's no vehicles or anything in here, so.
Okay. All right. Any comments from the public? Okay. We will consider the public comment portion closed at 6:43. I assume I did that right? Yep. I opened it for public comments and closed it. This will require two readings to pass the budget. Right.
Yes.
So do we, do we vote on the first reading here? Yes. So then you can open up the board members if they have any comments. And then open it for votes on first reading and the second reading later next month. Okay. Yes, sir. Oh, you want to make a motion for first reading? Second?
Second.
All those in favor of first reading on the budget? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Ordinance 2024-5, Community Crossings Matching Grant Additional Appropriations. Does this require the two readings? I believe it does.
Yes. Both of these ordinances are on second reading.
These are both on second? Okay. So this was, the community crossings 2024-5 is for $84,000. Does this go towards our piece of the project?
Yeah.
All the work that you're seeing on Main Street, this is $84,000 of our part. Whereas it's been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money that was originally appropriated in annual budget. We had ordained by the town council of Westport, Decatur County, Indiana, for the expenses of the taxing unit. The following additional funds of money are appropriated out of the funds named for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. $64,000 of the 84 is coming from 2400 Community Crossing Repairs and Maintenance. And then the other $20,000 is coming from 2200 MBH Restricted Fund. Can I get a motion to approve this on second reading?
Yes. Motion.
Motion made by Dolores, second by Russell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
She squeezed in the change here. Jeff Moore, if you'd like to move to the podium, is going to talk about the property on 601 East Main Street, the future home of Wesley Church.
Evening.
Evening.
You want me to say something, Brian?
The floor is yours, sir.
So we have approached Decatur County for rezoning of the property at 601 East Main. It's currently zoned Agricultural 1, which I don't know how that's in the city limits. And it's been not touched since 1875. But that piece of property is still A1. That was probably the original house that's on that piece of property on the several of the acres that are around that house. So we have to go to A2. So we're stepping from A1 to A2. They will not allow you to build a church in Decatur County in a cornfield. So even though there's houses on there, it's still Zoned A1. So that's what we're requesting. We went to Decatur County, requested that, and they asked us to come back to the city council to get approved. Your blessing to do that. So that's what we have at this moment.
God bless him.
Four acres. There's four acres there, yes.
Okay. That's curious.
3.92 or something like that. Yeah.
They also need, they need the council to confirm that there's water and sewer available, correct?
That's correct.
And then also confirm that we're okay with a driveway going onto Main Street, which is already there, but...
That's correct. So I'll actually need three letters from the town. One that says that you're giving a blessing for rezoning.
About one letter with three bull points.
That's great. That's great. But some of that's redundant, but that's what they want.
Yeah. Damon, there's city sewer out there, isn't there?
Yes. Water in sort of...
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the rezoning request from A1 to A2. And we certify that the driveway is good and we have water inserted to the property. Okay? Russell, second?
Yeah.
Got a second?
Oh, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Motion carried unanimously. Okay. Another second reading. The ARP funds, we still have $53,013 left, but this ordinance is on second reading and was reclassifying, made the budget classification 2401, the American Rescue Plan of $112,957.48. So I'll entertain a motion that we approve this on second reading.
Whoa. Do what?
This is, this is...
One more time.
This is second reading. This is what we did last month for the ARP funds.
Oh, okay.
To get them all set up so we can expend them all.
Okay. All right. Yes. I'm getting those.
Second?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Will we get into the paper law just now or is that a matter?
Since it's not on the agenda, we'll wait until the end.
Okay.
Okay. Main Street Fall Festival is coming up October 12. I think we're going to have to request to close Main Street. Connie, you want to?
Yeah, Main Street has our Fall Festival, October 12. And we are just requesting if we can close Main Street out front here from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve this.
A second.
Dolores has a second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Connie.
Thank you.
Dumpster days. We've got a cleanup coming up. October 3 is a Thursday. And then, so if the dumpsters aren't full and they don't disappear, they will be there still on Friday, the 4th of October. And we can start filling them on Thursday. Get your stuff down there sooner is better. Yeah. And then e-waste day, or electronics, small appliances, basically just about anything with a cord. Anything with a cord, but not with freon. They won't take dehumidifiers, air conditioners, stuff like that. But anything else that's got a cord, pretty much, they'll take. And that is Saturday, October 5. Do we have the hours on that on Saturday? Eight to noon?
It's usually, it's usually only a couple hours. Usually it's like 9:00 to 11:00. I haven't seen the exact hours, though.
But the dumpster days is all day, right?
Pretty much, yeah. And we usually have a board member down there to assist. Russell helped, I helped, Dolores helped.
I would say there will be somebody there to man it. So we can kind of watch, make sure stuff's not going in there.
Yeah. I'll talk to Glenn and Jenny and see if they want to help out. Jenny may not be able to, since she works. But we'll see to it. We handled it pretty well.
Yeah.
The three of us.
We did. No dumpster diving.
Yeah.
Well, no, wait a minute. Well, I was going to say, Brian did dumpster dive. I have to give it to him. You went in after a chair.
I went in after a chair?
Yeah.
Where'd it go?
No, he just knocked it off the top, so it cleared. Yeah, it just, and it went there. He was doing a moving service.
All right. Trick or treat hours. The, what else? Thursday this year, the 31st. I don't remember what we've done in the past, five to eight?
Yeah, usually.
Sound reasonable? Any recommendations from out there on trick or treat hours on that Thursday? Five dates, sound reasonable? Give me a head nod.
Yes.
Okay, if you have a head nod.
I could just get something, we don't have to put them down.
I'll make the motion that we set trick or treat hours on Thursday, 31st, from five to eight.
Do what?
I'm going to make a motion. Can you say it?
I can say it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thursday, 10, 31. Okay. Damon? Superintendent Public Works, your report.
As everybody sees, the sidewalk work's begun. Just be patient with us, and hopefully we'll all get through it and not have too many people upset. The engineers did overlook, we'll call it overlook. I'm not sure what happened, but a section, a couple sections of sidewalks did get left out. But I did get estimates to go ahead and see about getting them done, because it was two of the busiest, in my opinion, most important parts of the sidewalks that got left out, which was Pizza Licious and the post office. And they were, they did figure putting handicap accesses on both ends, but they left out the middle for some reason. I don't understand what went wrong. But anyway, the price for them to do that while they're here in town was $21,618.45 additional. I don't foresee us needing all that. That is worst-case scenario, because I don't think they'll use all the grant money for all the wedging and some other areas. We'll be able to save some of it. But if we can come up with that much more, like I said, worst-case scenario, to go ahead and do them while they're in town, I think that's best for everybody's safety and looks of that. I don't see no reason to leave Mexico. If we do it later, they're going to have to come back and cut the new asphalt. And it's just going to look like a patch job. And there is trip hazards, especially in front of Pizza Licious and on down with the post officers, trip hazards too. I think it's best if we go ahead and try to find a way to go ahead and do them. But we will probably need an answer tonight if we can do those now, so we can get them done, because they're in the middle of the project. So I don't know if we can...
What was the final amount?
21... Yeah, 21,618.45. And that would, that would complete all of them.
Was that in contract to have those things done?
Was that, I didn't contract to have those things done?
It was not. I said the engineers, for some reason, left those two areas out. We don't know why because they submitted the plans to state without us reviewing them. And then they know we're upset about it because they, they dropped the ball, and we didn't even see them before they got submitted, and the state accepted them. And community crossing grants, you can't change it once the state accepts it. So...
My recommendation is that we take this out of the ARP funds. I think the ordinance is structured such that we can use 21,000 out of that 112 we just voted is what I'd like to do.
My investment has to be done.
Yeah. I'm gonna talk to the engineer. I mean, just like Damon said, it got submitted to the state before we had a chance to check it, and so again, everything got approved, the money flowed, and we were left with two small sections of sidewalk that really shouldn't have been left out. So, it's gonna cost us $20,000 to fix their mistake. I'm gonna see if we can negotiate a discount with them or something to, you know, at least give us a little bit of relief.
Mr. Chair, can I ask just a preliminary question?
Yeah.
This would be from funds that have already been appropriated, is that right?
Yeah, we just approved the additional appropriations tonight.
Okay. And then as, Damon, can you just kind of talk to us about the price? I mean, do we have any other quotes on this?
We, we don't because this is a company that's already been awarded from the state to, to do the work that's already here.
And would, based on your experience with this type of work, if you were to receive additional quotes from other companies that are not currently on the ground working in that area, that those would come back higher than the 21,000 that's been quoted?
I can state that they were the cheapest out of the quotes that the, out of, I believe, was, Brian, was there five companies that quoted this job, and they were the cheapest they, they got the job from the grant.
And they're already on site, is that right?
Correct.
Or kind of in the area?
Yes.
Understand. I don't think they're gouging us.
Could, could I just ask? I mean, we just had two blocks of sidewalks done from Main Street here on both sides, and I know that was like in the 30,000 range. How does the pricing say per foot sidewalk compare? Because you're only talking about two blocks on one side of the street down there.
Thicker and wider, I know for one.
Thicker and wider plus union versus non-union company. All the companies who bid on the community crossing grant, by my knowledge, minus one, which was Globe, was union companies versus non-union companies.
We don't know like a X number of square feet of sidewalk. We got the 30,000 non-union, and it's gonna be Z square foot of sidewalk, union.
I haven't taken into that detail.
No, I had, I mean, I had the numbers that they quoted as far as what they give us for what needs done, but I'd have to go back to the office to get what we had done.
I just was wanting somebody to kind of look at the numbers and make sure we're in the right pricing.
The unions are bigger square.
Yeah, I...
We're in the ballpark. I'd like to put it to a vote.
I'm for it. I don't, I don't want to...
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the quote. Second, from Russell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Also, I did get quotes for seal coating the cemetery to try to maintain the asphalt until we can get the extra money to have some of it repaired, or if not, all of it redone. I had two of the three companies show up to give me quotes. The first company, their quote was $21,869. The second company was $13,500. And the third company never showed up for their appointment. So, I'd like permission, the money is budgeted, I believe, the lawyer from Craig, to do that, and it's, it's under what we had budgeted. So, I'd like to go with permission, go ahead and proceed with getting cemetery seal coated crack filled.
I'll make a motion to approve the 13,500 quote. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the same thing with the police department. One was $2,400, and the other one was $1,200. And the same, the third company was the same one supposed to done cemetery was another show. And that, that money is also budgeted to do this year. Requesting to move forward with it.
What were the two numbers again?
One was $1,200, and the other one was $2,400. And that money is already budgeted to do this year.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the $1,200 quote. Make a second. Give that one to Dolores. All those, all those in favor? Aye.
And just another reminder, we, we have started removing stuff at the cemetery that's not supposed to be there. I know I've said it several times, but I'm just, just trying to remind everybody so they don't get upset, but if you got any shepherd hooks or stuff that's not supposed to be there against the rules, we're slowly doing it, so there's still some time left if we're not to your section, but if you want it, get it, because once we get to it, it will be gone. So, we started at the front, working our way to the back. If you, if you look at the section, you'll, you'll notice the ones we've been to because they're, they're cleaned out, and the stones are cleaned out around them. So, if you have something out there that you're wanting, please just get it out before we get there because they are, they are going through the waste, so just another reminder. Anybody have anything else for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Russell, you wanna talk about the...
Okay. We got three estimates quotes for the pickleball court. All-Star, let me open up. Omera. All-Star and Globe and Omera. Basically, what we talked about was... Quanis tried to do this during the COVID. So, we talked about the town being going 30,000 out of the American Rescue Plan and the Quanis.
I may help him because he is no dog.
Anyway, what we got is from All-Star, we got a bid for one pickleball court for 4,000, or 41,951.47.
Give me that number again, 41?
That's for one pickleball court. For two pickleball courts, their bid is 7,000, or 76,763.36.
I heard 76,000. What's the rest of the numbers?
Globe for one court was $47,500. For two courts was $74,200. And Brian saved me from cutting myself, but he's got Omera.
One court, 78,000. Two courts, 114.3. Okay.
Are those quotes on top of the existing tennis court?
No, this is standalone courts.
Okay, so starting from there.
Starting from scratch.
Okay.
I think Dolores wanted to keep the tennis court.
No, I wanted the tennis court to be resurfaced and a pickleball court painted on it. That's what I wanted. I, are these pickleballs gonna be made out of gold or something?
This, this is what they quoted here. And it's actually not on the, not on that side. It's actually on the other side of the tennis court over here. That's what they quoted. One court versus two court. So...
West of the existing.
Correct. Correct. East, east of the existing court. What's showing is west.
Say, do you remember where the horseshoes used to be?
Yeah.
Right.
There's a volleyball pit over here now, and then this is the road.
Not over there. Not there.
Correct.
Okay.
That's where the horseshoes used to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Horseshoe pits were over here.
Aye, 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 aye. What, 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 what do we want them to do now?
Well, right, right now it's eight, unless somebody's got an extra 35,000 roughly, we'd be looking at one court. My understanding, Quanis, our, our grant was for, we got for $10,000. So, the town's 30 that we put All-Star was...
41,61. Yeah.
So, you got $10,000 from that grant?
Correct, yes. We applied for, we applied for 15, and they granted us 10.
And that 15 was what? I'm confused. What was Quanis gonna be? What was Quanis going to offer? What, what was, what were they bringing to the table as far as money flies? The grant. Just the grant.
Hey, Brian?
What's the balance in ARP now that you voted to?
We gotta run the numbers and see what's left. So, I don't think we're gonna run above on anything on this tonight.
I was just curious about this 50, 38, I was listening here.
If you, Brian, if you base it off of that...
It's gonna be real tight.
Yeah. You, you barely have enough. There's 41,944.78 ARP funding, so you'd be slightly under, slightly short, the amount of money based on the All-Star quote for one court. And that's if our estimates and everything come through for the fire hydrants, because we have not purchased those yet. We don't have, did we get a bid from Omera?
I did get Omera's bid in, which it was just like tonight, it was way up there, so I'm...
Because I estimated 6,000 times three fire hydrants for installation, so I had kind of earmarked 18,000 for that. If it was outrageous, then, I mean, we're a little bit short of being able to do the lowest bid here.
Well, Quanis got the $10,000 grant.
Yeah, that doesn't, that counts that up.
Oh.
I added the 10,000 in, and that puts us at 41,944, and that's providing all the estimates are exactly what we think they're gonna be. Because just because you have an estimate doesn't mean that'll be the ending prize.
Well, we can maybe see you tonight. Right. And then possibly, Mike...
The other thing with, with Quanis, we've had the barbecue, and we've had a good barbecue. We just have to see how much money that we generated from there that we could contribute into that also.
I would say it's doable. I'd probably tell him a dollar.
Just the 41,000 include fencing, lighting, anything else? Other than just the surface paint and then that?
Okay. It's got the excavation, the coating and everything, and the pickleball fence, which the pickleball fence is $2,880.
$2,880 was for fencing?
Right. But just the pickleball fence. Just the pickleball fencing, which I would say, having been in Quanis, they can build the fence cheaper than that due to labor and, or, or, I'd say that's something to be possibly we can discuss before the next meeting. From where I'm standing, I would say it's doable. Of course, I've always been into fundraising.
So, I'd recommend we don't take any action on this tonight right now. Dolores is shaking her head too. You're okay. Okay. All right. That pretty much concludes the agenda. I will open it up for public comments now. Anybody can come up, state your name, and what you're here about.
Okay. I'm Sam Jones, and before I start, I would like for, like for my three minutes without interruption. And I'd like to discuss the issue of city personnel not being held to the same standards as that of the rest of the town. According to Westport Burning Ordinance 1987-7, "No person shall burn any fire or allow any fire to burn within the corporate limits of the town of Westport after the sun has set for that day. I filed a report in regards to the safety of the town, and I was rebuffed." Quote, "Their burning of brush doesn't violate the ordinance. The burning in general does not violate the ordinance. However, the city employee or family burning after the sun had set does violate the ordinance. The sun set at 8:10 PM on the day when the fire was still burning, at 10:30 PM when I went to bed. The fire in question had flames exceeding 20 feet in the air, was close to the trees, was left unattended with accelerants, with picture and video proof. Westport is not oblivious to fires with two large fires devastating the town in early years. Close to 600 reported fires in the last 20 years, according to citydata.com. My wife is a retired second-generation firefighter who is not comfortable with these type of bonfires in the country, let alone within city limits, especially not the dry and windy conditions active at the time of the report. I was told by the city that it is legal to burn brush within city limits, but how do you know that it was just brush? My concern report did not mention what was being burnt. The only way this information will be known is by going to the city employee and asking questions. This brings us back to my initial statement. The city employees receiving special treatment. Any non-city employee receives a citation without any forewarning questions. My ancestors, the Kans, the Stotts, the Armonds, did not persevere in developing this town to see it burnt down by careless actions of city employees and their families while elected officials fresh under the rug."
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, be seated. What Mr. Jones neglected to tell you is that he was issued a citation for dogs running loose that was causing problems with the neighbors. I think this complaint is, it appears to be a tit for tat. I wasn't aware that there was burning going on after dark. Mr. Jones, it's not our intent to find people. It's our intent to fix problems, and if your dog situation has been taken care of, there will be no fine for you.
It has been resolved.
Okay. And, and the, the complainant is happy that it has been resolved, and I, I see no issue in finding somebody for burning a brush pile.
If I'm...
I'm gonna have you three minutes.
My name is Caitlin Jones. I am the retired firefighter, second generation. I was the one that brought it to attention, not my husband. I was in our kitchen, which was 100 yards away from the fire, and I could hear the crackling. I was the one who, he might have signed off on the email, but it was my complaint. I was the one concerned because it was not far from other trees, and it was very dry and very windy. And in my years of firefighting and also with fighting, firefighting with my father, I've seen devastation, and I was concerned for the town. It wasn't so much, it was not about trying to retaliate. It was nothing of that sort. It was being concerned since we, there are a lot of children, and there are a lot of families in that area. Thank you.
We are coming up on the fall of the year. It's a common practice if a brush... It's common practice, if a brush pile is gonna be big enough, that you call dispatch and let them know that it's gonna be a controlled burn. I put the number up for that multiple times, it's 222-4911. You can call them and let them know that you've got a controlled burn. We can, you can call the town hall, and we can let Jay Maddox know. It's just as a courtesy, something's gonna be going on. But brush burning in general, leaves, tree limbs, things of that sort, can be burned during daylight hours. That's all I have on that.
When you were saying something about the crackling, what, what do you mean? What significance does that have?
It was loud. It was cedar that was being burnt, which causes the high flames. It also adds to the noise, and this was not during daylight. The pictures and videos we got were after 8:30, and it was still going with high flames at 10:00 p.m.
Can you share those electronically with the board? Email them if you want?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Brian, I just have one question. Does the town find for burning, or is that the fire department that does that?
I don't know.
Fine, fine, fine.
It's an ordinance though.
It's a county ordinance. Yeah.
What does the county ordinance say?
It doesn't say anything about fines if there's a violation to that ordinance. And we've never, I've never heard of finding for burning on our side. Usually we, well, the reason I ask is because usually if someone calls us and complains about it, we tell them to call dispatch to check it out, because it's Indiana state violation, it's not. I was just trying to get clarification.
But it's okay for a bonfire? Does it matter what kind of wood you use for a bonfire?
Well, we may need to look at modifying the ordinance. It's not intended to restrict people that want to have a fire pit or something, you know, to warm themselves by for the evening. I don't think that's what this was. But those aren't, there's no exceptions in the current ordinance for a fire pit or a bonfire, you know, for roast and weens and marshmallows and stuff. So that may need to be looked at. All right. Anything else from the floor? Sandy? Sandy?
This isn't really a question or comment, it's a suggestion. And I said something to Barb Winchester about this. Last year for the Fall Festival, I was sitting at a house down on Main Street, and you guys blocked Main Street off right here at the festival. And I saw many cars speeding east, heading right towards the Fall Festival, because you could see the speed limit sign. And they were going very fast, right up to the barricade. My suggestion would be maybe this year to set a barricade up, one intersection farther that way, just to, I mean, there were many times when I kind of held my breath, like, oh my gosh, I hope they stop, they don't plow through the Fall Festival. Just maybe something to think about, to make sure that everybody does get slowed down. You know, the barbecue's much bigger, so it goes farther down the road. So that was just it, just a comment.
That's probably a good point, Brian. Because time they get down here, there's nowhere for them to turn around anyway. So probably would need to turn at the intersection prior to the park.
All right, anything else?
On behalf of the Westport Quanis Club, we'd like to thank the town for closing the street off so that we could have the barbecue and car show. One of the projects that's coming up for the Quanis Club is we are planning on painting the concession stand on the outside, and also on the concession portion of the inside of it. We're gonna be doing that with volunteers through the Day of Caring through the United Fund. So that's gonna be coming up on the 18th. We've got two projects that's being done at that time. The other part is the Day of Caring will be printing the shirts and hats for the ball program that we host each year for the county. So those are two projects that'll be going on.
But, Mike, sorry.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there any way this fall, when the little guys are playing ball, on the ball dunks, is there any way that somebody could man the score clock, scoreboard out there?
We usually do that during the tourney, but the controls and stuff are available during the regular games also. So if somebody wants to physically do that.
What about, are you saying that a parent?
Anybody can do it. It's a very simple program. Home, visitor, and then three buttons. But I mean, on the control pad, it's just a punch button.
For somebody to do that there, to man the board or work with that?
Yep. We can do that, yes. Now, it won't be the fall, because we don't play baseball in our program till the spring.
Well, I'm talking about the little ones.
Yeah.
The little guys whenever you...
Yeah.
There's no elevator up there, so you're gonna go up. Well, this tip won't be...
There's no air conditioning up there either. ARP funds.
Do you have inclined steps, or is it vertical?
Inclined.
There are inclined steps.
Steep steps, yes.
All right, anything else? Going once, going twice, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? We are adjourned.
Dolores, we've got... We got to just get this in sync.
Well, we gotta get something in sync. I'm not sure what we're...